Dr. Murillo?
Present.
Dr. Polak?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Ms. C?
Here.
Ms. Winma?
Present.
Stand for the plate.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, we have a super exciting night, so that was such a fun way to kick off this evening's meeting. I don't know, I might feel spoiled, like we might want that every time, but we have enough talent in this district, that is for sure. So we are celebrating Arts and Education Week, and so we wanted to bring forward some of the amazing educators and students that just fill our halls and our rooms and our minds with creativity and so much amazing talent. So I'm going to invite Mr. Francis to say a few words, and then we're going to introduce the educators and students, and then we will have you up for a quick photo, once they all tell us who they are. And also, take a look around. I know you came into a loud room, but there's art everywhere, including back here, along the ledge. It is incredible. So take a look when you have a chance.
Thank you, Teresa. Tonight, we welcome a number of our talented students and our dedicated educators to be recognized as part of Arts and Education Week. Through their passion and dedication to the arts, our educators open minds, spark imagination, and nurture creativity. Their impact extends far beyond the classroom, shaping futures, building confidence, and inspiring dreams. With gratitude, the Board of Education honors your extraordinary contributions to our students. Educators, please share with us your name, your role, and the school you work here in our district.
Thank you, John. My name is Michael Skrumb, the Department Chair of Fine Arts at Oswego High School, and just excited that you all are recognizing lots of familiar faces, and I'm going to pass the microphone over to Mr. Craig.
My name's Randy Craig. I'm actually the pottery teacher here at Oswego East, but I was at Thompson Junior High for 17 years, so you may recognize me from there. Former students over here.
Hey.
Hi, I'm Heather Stanich. I'm the Fine Arts Department Chair here at Oswego East, and thank you guys for having this tonight. The artwork that we have up on the easels are art award-winning pieces, and if it's not the original, it's the print of their piece, because some of their artwork has gone back home with them, or they were up in other places. We've had, these have been either state award winners, national award winners, and congressional award winners that are in these frames. So, thank you, guys.
I'm Angela Robinson. I have been teaching for 30 years, 22 in this district, and I see many faces I recognize for over that tenure. Thank you again, everyone, for having us this evening. I'm at Thompson Junior High.
Thank you.
And to our students, we thank all of you for showcasing your talents and your work with us this evening. If there is any student here who would like to introduce themselves, please come on up and share the art that you created.
It wasn't an option, John.
Our saxophonist, we have Matty Phillips. Our trumpet player, we have Ava Maxwell. Our trombone player, we got Gabriel Velasquez. Our bassist, we have Betsy Kraus. Our guitar player, we have Karla Longard. I play drums, I am Wesley T Miller.
Thank you so much.
John, I think we have some artists back here.
We have more artists?
We have, yes. Don't be shy.
Mr. Skrumb is making you come up.
Hello, I'm Ava Rose Mikalon. I'm a senior. My art piece is on the wall right there. It's of that little poster of the two guys on there. I love drawing digital portraits of people.
My name is Kimberly Bustamante, and I'm also a senior, and I like to paint, specifically oil paint. And my painting is that one of the girl getting her hair dyed, purple.
Yeah. We got one more next year there.
Hi, I'm Nico Peter, and I'm on the NHS and Art Club Board, and I'm here representing them.
Thank you.
One thing I did forget to add, and you can see this in, it'll be posted, I think, on YouTube, is that our jazz performers, this whole day from fourth period, seventh period, performed, and then we had a visiting artist named Louis Akenbach show up, and that was his action painting behind here. He has made himself known on the west and south side of Chicago and other venues within the jazz community, and that he actually goes and does action painting to the music. And so, these students have had a number of years to have that experience with Lou, the phenomenal artist. So, we're very, very fortunate to have him come over here. So I can't thank you enough for making this day. This is actually a dream of mine, to see something like this happen. So I'm really, really grateful. Thank you.
All right, we do have a certificate for each of our schools honoring the arts and music educators who are incredibly thankful for their contributions. We will get those to all the schools this week.
So, Board, if you have any comments or anything you want to share, and then we'll do a photo. So is there anything you want to do?
I have a comment. I am a lifelong musician, so I encourage all of you to keep playing, and keep painting, and keep drawing, because you enjoy it now, and your life will be a lot fuller as an adult if you continue that. So please, keep going.
I concur. What most people don't know about me is that I attended a visual and performing arts school, sixth grade to 12th grade, and I just know how impactful participating in the arts and engaging in the arts. And so when I walked in, my heart was just filled to hear the jazz, to see the art. So thank you so much for showcasing your work and being a part this evening.
As a former band teacher, it made me very excited to come in and see you all and hear the jazz tunes and everything. So again, like everyone on the Board has said so far, just stick with it, enjoy it in whatever capacity works for you. Dr. Robinson, a shout out, because my boys love your art class, so thank you very much. So thank you for being here, students and staff. We really appreciate it.
I want to give a shout out, in addition, also, especially to our educators. One of the things that I love about our programs here is that you really make art come alive beyond the practice itself, but really connecting it to the broader world of arts education, and that, you know, the arts are really, they're both an internal process, but you can also use it to give back, and you can make a vocation, like get a job doing it, right? So that's the thing, and that's so exciting. It was very much, very much common back in the day, where you were like, I want to be an artist. Like, well, you're going to be poor, you can't do it, right? And so you've broken that barrier for our students in such a powerful, meaningful way, that when you meet them, they're confident, they're excited. Beyond learning the craft, they're really learning the vocation. And when you look at college programs, and so this is, part of this is that, college programs now are no longer about the arts practice, like defining the art, but they're really about the entrepreneurial spirit of, and the practice of the business of the arts. And you are doing that here, in high school. And so that just puts our students at the front edge of really learning that, celebrating the arts. And lastly, art is good, right? It's really good. And I've shared this with some of you, but before I came here, the summer before I got, when I was appointed to the Board, and I was at a meeting, and way up by Schaumburg somewhere, there was a business symposium, and I shared with somebody that I was going to Oswego, they're like, Oswego? And literally, this woman stopped, and for the next half an hour, wanted to tell me about all the amazing band teachers and artists that were in this district, that she followed them. I mean, I'm like, I'm going to go over here, but she just followed me all night. She said, no, everybody follows Oswego. So kudos to all of you. I know it takes a village. There's no competition, but the competition of working together to ensure our students succeed. And you make us extremely proud, and we can learn from you every single day. So I just can't say enough about your program, and appreciate everything you do.
If there's no other comments, could we invite our Board to the middle, so we could do a photo, and then we invite our educators and students to come up as well? We'd like to do a photo.
Our camera just died.
Before we move to the next agenda item, Dr. Calgady, going to speak?
Good evening, Board. Just, it was important, before we get started, and it's difficult, given the celebration we just had of our students. But I do think it was important that we move, before we move into our formal agenda, that I take a moment to address an extremely serious concern, one that has impacted our community this evening. In cases of abuse, harassment, or misconduct, we thoroughly and unequivocally denounce these actions. We stand firmly committed with all of our victims. We support their voices, and we are committed to continuing to ensure that they are heard and cared for. We, as a district, are especially committed to providing an environment in our school community that does not condone any form of harassment, and that provides a safe and supportive environment. We want to and invite anyone who may be a victim to contact Dr. Marquesha Mitchell, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, at 630-636-3091, or by email, at title9@st308.org. This information is on our website, and we invite you to use it, or you can email, of course, any member of our team. We are committed to meeting with anyone who has been impacted, and are committed to providing support and taking action within the scope of our authority to ensure we support those individuals. We also strongly encourage anyone who may have been a victim who has not done so, to make a report directly to law enforcement, in addition to our supports internally. The success, safety, the dignity, and well-being of every student and staff member in our care is of most primacy. I want to now invite our Board President to also share some remarks from the Board of Education. Vice, sorry, our Vice President, Dr. Heather Martin.
You know, it's Title IX?
Correct, yes.
And st308.org.
Thank you, Dr. Calgady. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight, and for those joining us on the live feed, or later by watching the recording. As a Board, we echo the same sentiments that Dr. Calgady has shared. At no time is it ever permissible for an adult to threaten, abuse, mislead, or take advantage of a student. Furthermore, it is never acceptable for anyone to infringe upon the rights of our students or our staff to learn and work in a supportive and safe environment. As a Board of Education, we take these matters with the utmost seriousness. The district utilizes appropriate Board policies to issue a notice of limiting an individual's access to school property when warranted, as permitted under Board Policy 830. Our commitment is to protect the safety and well-being of our students and staff. To that end, the Board has charged Dr. Calgady and the district attorneys to continue to review past reports, consider new information, and review existing notices that ensure necessary individuals are restricted from being present on district property without explicit permission, as according to Board Policy. We encourage anyone who feels they may have been a victim of abuse, either as a student or a staff member, to come forward and make a report with the district and with law enforcement. An incident reporting form is on the homepage of the website. You can also email Title9, which, as Dominic said, is titleix@st308.org directly. Contact Dr. Mitchell, as well, as Dr. Calgady mentioned. This information is also on our Title9 page of the district website. Thank you for your concerns, for your advocacy, and for your partnership, as we work together to support those who need it most.
Do we have any?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're moving to 5.1, opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback received from our members of the public, and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Individuals interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented to the Secretary to the Board. When the Secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Comments should address the Board of Education as a whole, and not be directed to an individual Board member, audience, or staff member. Follow-up to your questions or concerns may be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Eric Echaveria? It shouldn't be. It doesn't seem to be on.
We're getting yelled.
My name is Eric Echaveria. I live in Oswego. I'm deeply disturbed by what's happened here in the past from a former employee of the district. To my understanding, he was terminated or let go some years ago. And to my understanding, no less than seven people have come forward with accusations of harassment. It has come to my attention this morning that this person was allowed to return to visit school district properties, which is deeply upsetting to me. Now, I have two young children that go to Southbury. I'm here as a dad to let you know that people like this do not belong in this community, let alone the school district. I also learned that this individual was a coach at the OITF football program. My daughter is a cheerleader for that football program. And I was deeply, deeply concerned and upset that this person is allowed to be a coach for this football organization. Now, it has nothing to do with the district, I understand that. But I did reach out to that organization this afternoon, and expressed my anger and frustration that this person be allowed in contact with children as part of their coaching staff. I received an email just a few minutes ago, that was forwarded by my wife, from that organization that have released this individual from coaching. Now, I understand it is not a court of law, but this district does have the obligation to protect its students and staff from terrible people like this. I have not been directly affected, nor have my children, but I stand here before you to let you know that this is not acceptable. As you can see, I'm a little aggravated, a little passionate, but I'm here to express my deep, deep, disturbing, and very impactful feelings that I have towards this subject. This person belongs in jail. He does not belong in our community. I know this person cannot be named directly, but he knows who he is. If he's here today, he doesn't belong here. If he's watching on the internet, there are many people who know his name, and he does not belong here. He needs to be held accountable, and this Board needs to live up to their mission and core values, which include integrity, humanization, dignity, and courtesy to those who have been affected by this disgusting human being. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Fish?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Did you want a chair?
We can grab another chair for you.
No? Okay.
Yes. So, good evening. My name is Annie Fish, and I come here tonight not just with my own story, but hearing the voices of those who have been silenced for too long. I apologize for crying in there. To all those survivors who are out there sleeping, your courage to share your story gave others the strength to speak. You named what happened, even when the district's response was silence, avoidance, and neglect until it became a social media headline. You reminded us that when multiple students and their own teachers were breaking up to speak, districts don't fail to act. Then too many adults enabled them by defending them, excusing them, and prioritizing the reputation over the safety of students. This is not just about one predator. This is about a culture, a culture that protects long-term residents, football coaches, and favorite teachers, while pushing victims into silence or exile. A culture where harm is hidden to preserve image, a culture where the message to victims is, your safety, your future, your voice, do not matter here. What we are saying tonight, they do matter. And as an Oswego native with deep ties, my own great uncle has even been the athletic director of Oswego High School, my brother, a proud coach of the Oswego School District, and I myself am a part of many different projects going on in the school district that I love to be a part of. I still stand here, heartbroken, that the school we all tried to build, the school that we thought we could belong in, was never safe for even me, someone who's involved in a part of building it. But now, decades later, it's still unsafe for students who trust this district to protect them, with the decision to let this man on property, and to punish the teachers and students that decided to be brave enough to go against the debate. So I ask you, would you choose to dismiss predatory behavior as something that just looked bad, or would you name it for what it was, abusive and unacceptable? Would you choose to defend someone as a plug bag if it's unpopular and well-liked, or would you believe the students risk everything to speak out, even their own education? Would you choose to let predators of predator resign quietly, only to return years later to public school events, or would you finally take action to protect victims from having to see the person who harmed them celebrate them in their own community? Would you choose to protect reputations, traditions, and the favorite teacher image, or would you choose to protect children? Would you choose to protect predators, or would you choose to protect students? Because over and over again, this district shows wrong, and the cost of those choices have been carried by students who never should have had to pay the price. This has gone on too far, and for far too long, and I commend the bravery of Natalie and every other student and teacher who has spoken up. I call on you, leaders of this district, to do what has been avoided for years, naming the harm and the silence, and protect our students. Because if you cannot, then you are part of the system that protects predators instead of children. Because it matters what you would not do, only in theory, but also in practice. And what we will practice as survivors is truth in holding them accountable. We thank you for inviting us to the table, and we look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was just the two.
Okay. Thank you. We get to item 6.1, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. We are well into the school year. I want to thank, again, our many talented students who came this evening. What a tremendous, and I think you heard my sentiment about the arts, I think you really spoke, again, to the gift of having an investment from our district. It is truly, many programs around the country, and the district struggled with arts programming, and we are fortunate to be in a community that prioritizes them. Just a few weeks ago, we were, Mary Jo and I, and Dominic, and Erica, were at the end of band camp, right? Is that what, our band week, the marching bands preparation week, I apologize. And just to see the way in which families rally around our artists. And that's really such an important feature of this community, that it's not just a student by themselves, but it's really a community effort to value the arts. And one thing we know is that the arts heal. The arts bring healing, and they are a source of great hope, and the music and the transcendence that we can find in the arts. As we think about the struggle in our country right now, I hear artists starting to speak up, and if it wasn't for those investments of our schooling programs, we wouldn't have the voice of our artists. And really, the artists are at the front of social action. It's not something we talk about very much, but the artists are at the front of social justice. It is the artist who raises the song, it is the artist who says the poem, it's the artist who makes the effort. And for those reasons, among many others, right, and we think about from a voc- And we think about from a vocational sense, but from the point of justice, it's the artists when we think about the Harlem Renaissance, when we think about the efforts today in our world to confront injustice. The arts can really be a wellspring of support. I want to shift gears then and really talk about last week. We had a surprise week. We knew it was coming, it was just a couple of weeks he gave us. Dr. Tony Sanders, our state superintendent, came around. And what a joyful visit. I want to thank the senior leadership team, our principals, for their effort to show out and show up. It was really tremendous. Both, we got to Oswego High School, hear from our coalition, and they talked about rightful presence in such a powerful way. They really stood tall in the fact that we belong, that whether you're a member of our LGBT community, if you're a member of our Black community or Hispanic community, our diverse learners community, you belong. And you belong to have a rightful presence at this table. And they made that so strong that we came out of the meeting, his archer was like, "What's this rightful presence?" "What is this rightful presence?" They were like, "We've never heard this before," and they were Googling it right away. And really powerful. And another highlight of our visit was, we got to, two more highs I have to take, I apologize, but we got to visit Boulder Hill to celebrate the 20th anniversary of our dual-language program. That's something we're celebrating this year. And just to visit kindergarten classrooms, first grade classrooms, and just to see the work of our students and the commitment to the seal of my literacy. And to know that this program has withstood attempts to take it down. So powerful. And then the second highlight was, we got to go to Long Beach, and there we celebrated the house system. This board has invested in, oh, in the house, the house system. Blue team here, thank you. We, Tony Sanders got recruited into the green house, I regard. Yes, green. It was remarkable. He thought he'd landed in heaven. So it was just really such a celebration. And really, the last thing, and I don't think he would mind me sharing this, but he did share that when he applied to be state superintendent at the governor's, in front of the governor, he talked to the governor about this idea of having a teacher residency program where we would grow our own within our school districts, where we would be able to invest in this. And he said, and with tears in his eyes, and I don't think he'd be embarrassed that I said that, but with deep emotion, he talked about just being able to see the fruits of that and to have students for us to now have representation. Because representation matters in our places where we had not been before among our educators. So that was very moving. This month is, and so again, I just want to thank one more time, our team, who really helped coordinate the day. It was a team effort. Next, this month, we are really honoring our Month of Field Alcohol Spectrum, this sort of awareness month, and tomorrow is that Awareness Day. And this, you know, this is something that knowledge is power. And when I have sat with parents in my office, we've reached out to them and said, "What do you know about this?" And we've sat down and we've talked about it. It's very impactful, and I think for our educators and for our staff and our community, it's really important to understand it and the influence it has. There's a lot of information out there. FASC is incredibly important, and I want to thank our educators and our staff and our community for investing in the learning required for this. On September 11th, we will pause as a community to reflect on September 11th, 2021, and on this time of tragedy. And I would say that what stands above and beyond when we think about that date on September 11th, that it's also an opportunity to recognize that this is a day where we were reminded of our shared humanity because of the tremendous loss in survival. But I would also say, when we reflect on that day, let us not remember, let us not forget that it's also a basis for a lot of bigotry that comes out of that. And so I do want to name that we do not tolerate any kind of prejudice or hatred based on our understanding. Unfortunately, sometimes for some of our students' board, we've worked very hard over the years that we don't want the first-time person understands about what other faiths are, it's through this event. There are lots of richnesses in our culture, and we want to make sure. And so I would just say that this is a day of courage, and this is a day of diversion in our country that came together to fight this unimaginable tragedy. Last but not least, board, I am just so grateful for the board's support in recognizing the need to invest in our facilities. Sometimes when you drive around, you see these pretty buildings, you tell, "Why do they need a long-range facility plan, and why are we even doing this?" Well, this building itself was subject to a faulty drain. And I don't think it was faulty, but whatever the drain was, couldn't handle the rain. And that rain came into our building, and we shut down this building for quite a bit, for two days at the beginning of school year. I've never missed, anybody in here, raise your hand, missed two days of school in a row? No, nobody, right? So let's be real, let's be candid, that is significant. And so if you're watching, I want to invite you to come out and join us this Wednesday night. We are in the next phase of this session, these sessions on Wednesday night. If you care about our facility, if you care about turf fields, if you care about cheer, what do you call, our stadium seating, where we can come in and cheer, that they're raking in broken? If you care about any of these things, you care about the heating and the cooling in your classroom or any of this, send, if you can't come, send somebody, pick somebody, reach out, tell your neighbor, come. We as a community have to think about how we prepare ourselves for the future of our district. I meant, I said this last time, I'll say it again. Our kindergarten teachers, our first-grade teachers, all the way through 12th grade, they prepare for students who return for the first day of school. Ninety-nine percent of our students did not return to classrooms that didn't have chairs, didn't have materials, didn't have resources. We today as a community have a chance to prepare for our students for five years. And if we don't, in five years from now, we will have mobile units. Because that's the amount of problems that we could potentially have if we don't invest in changing those. And if you're not sure that is not hyperbole, I think there are very serious concerns, and we want to make sure that we invite you. Your voice matters, it's a part of our strategic plan, it's not just willy-nilly. It's a part of the work we've committed to doing that we brought to the board. So this Wednesday night is just one of many, and I would invite you to join us in lending your voice to understanding the needs of our buildings and taking the next step. And with that, I want to invite the board. I want to thank you for your moment of reflection and sharing some news relating to other good news of the district.
So we're proud to celebrate that according to the latest U.S. News and World Report rankings, both of our high schools rank in the top quarter of all schools in the state. This achievement highlights our district's dedication to preparing students for success after graduation. Congratulations to Oswego High School and Oswego East High School.
SD 308, in partnership with Aramac, received a Healthy Meals Incentive Recognition Award. The Innovation in the Preparation of School Meals Award recognizes recent improvements in both nutritional quality of the school meals and creativity of new menu items. We are proud of this partnership and eager to continue delivering the best possible products to our students.
Hallie Wardle, a Southmark at OHS, had an incredible performance at a golf tournament last month. She shot a 59, better than me, setting a new course record at Whitetail Ridge Golf Club and gaining attention from local media for the incredible feat of breaking 60. Congratulations, Hallie, that is impressive.
I feel like you can tell which board members golf and which ones don't. Very mixed reactions, excitement and curiosity. All right, OHS students and artists, Mara Pierce and Ava Mikalon, are joining their peer Madison McNanna in having their artwork displayed at the Extra Credit Art Educator and Student Exhibition 2025 in Chicago. Congratulations, Mara and Ava, and I know at least Ava was here earlier, so those of you that are here absolutely take some time to look at the artwork around the room because it is beautiful.
There will be a series of open gym sessions for elementary students with special needs hosted by our elementary-adapted P.E. team and the exceptional parents of exceptional children. For Epic, the district's special education needs PTA. First session will take place at Churchill Elementary School this Tuesday, September 9th, from 6:30 to 7:30, students and their families are welcome.
Before I jump into my announcement, so I want to give kudos to, and I do apologize, it's at Oswego East, because I dropped my son off early in the morning, I know, shame. He should be riding the bus. However, as I'm dropping him off, there are typically, I'll call faculty members standing at the door greeting the kids, which I sincerely appreciate. Sorry, I'm still getting over my little sinus. But with that, I just want to say thank you to the staff members that are standing outside greeting our kids. I think that's so important, because that's the first face that you see. So I think that is tremendous, so thank you. Okay, going into the speech. Avid Day is Friday, September 12th. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to recognize the impact of this program in our schools and others throughout the nation. Join us in celebrating the positive ways in which Avid has served so many of our students.
And finally, as a reminder, the deadline for submitting health paperwork is next Monday, September 15th. Please visit the SD 308 health requirements for more information about what is needed and contact your student's school nurse with any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any board member comments?
No, I just want to go back to, you know, the arts, right? I can't leave it alone. Again, I was a drama major for, I'd say, six years. And I think that it is so important that we do focus on the great work that we're doing here in the district. It is my absolute favorite part of the board meeting when we give shout-outs, and I just thought that it was an extra layer of warm and fuzzies just watching our students on full display, listening to the jazz band, looking at the art when I walked in. And so again, an incredible job to just our educators and the leadership within this district. Thank you so much.
I do. First of all, whoever did the Polaroid camera on the back, whatever student did the Polaroid camera, I want it, it's amazing, it's just so cool. Anyway, I want to give a, I want to bring some recognition to the girls' flag football teams, both at OE and OH. I have been to several of the games on both sides, and let me tell you, these ladies are tremendous. This is not what you would imagine girls' football to be back in the day. This is, these girls are tough, they're talented, they have a lot of heart, and they can compete, both teams can compete with anybody else in the immediate area. I know from hearing from, hearing from the athletic director and that IHSA is still working out the final rules. So the rules have been kind of a floating issue as it started, as, because this is a, pretty much an inaugural year for us, and, you know, still early in the game for other teams. But I think it's a great addition, and again, the girls are great, they're so dedicated and talented. So kudos to them.
Can I, can I, so we were at the game, and did you ever figure out down a distance?
I found out, no, because the rules are literally changing during the game.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah.
It's gonna take a while.
It's, yes, they're still figuring it out.
Okay. Because it'd be like, what you would think was first in 10, it would be like first in 39 or something.
Now I want to attend a game. I eavesdropped this weekend and listened to my daughter's friend who plays flag football. And I want to say, she says she got several touchdowns this weekend, so now I want to go.
The OE team, they're slippery? Holy cow, they just go.
And I ended up going too.
Slippery is a, is a, Barry Sanders, you know, I don't think, sorry. Maurice Jones Drew.
Well, and I've watched so much flag football. On Friday night, I went to the boys' varsity game, and of course, that's not flag. And I, you know, kept expecting, I kept expecting guys to kind of, you know, kind of dart to the side a little bit more to avoid having their flags ripped off. It's tough making the transition, but it was all good.
Yeah. Jimin? Amy? Right? Okay. All right, moving to 7.1, Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 7.1 minutes from the Board of Education meeting on August 25th, 2025, open and closed sessions, 7.2 to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district, 7.3 to approve field trips for overnight and/or more than 200 miles.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Ms. C?
Aye.
Dr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Wenmouth?
Aye.
Dr. Mario?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Move to information item 8.1, emergency approval of Oswego East High School performing arts center repairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we found out about a month ago or so is that the intermesse and pain that is in the packed building, which is not too far below us here, started peeling. And that pain is actually specially designed to retard flames in case of a fire. And as a result of that, our architect advised us not to use that space until such a time when it's been fixed. We know that our students used that space for instruction, and it's also storm shelter in case of storm. So what we've done is, we believe without any doubt that this is a health and life safety repair that needs to be done because of two reasons. First, it deprives our students of the academic experience that they enjoy from using that space. And two, the fact that we use it as a storm shelter, there's no space big enough to be able to do that. So what we've done is, we reached out to four architectural firms and asked them to provide us estimates. And the process we use is somewhat different. We use what is called design-build. It's a construction project process whereby we combine the architectural design of the repair with the construction into one. And that way, the firm will do the management of the project from the beginning to the end. We did that as a way to get good pricing and also to be able to get the work done as soon as possible. So of the four architectural firms that we contacted, we received varying prices. And the project will be, the firm, whichever firm we submit, will be involved in doing all the work. And as soon as we get approval from the board today, we'll give the go-ahead for the winning bidder, the winning firm, to proceed on the work, on doing the work. And we've included the pricing that we received from the three firms that responded out of the four that we contacted. And we recommended that the firm with the lowest price, all three firms have the ability to be able to do the work without any doubt, but we're recommending that the firm with the lowest price, the awarded the project so they can start doing work.
I was just going to say, so this is going to come for information and action? So now is the time to get any questions out, anything? So go ahead.
I just have one question about the process, just for my own education. How, this is different than a request for proposals because of the emergency nature of it, that you would reach out to the four and then ask them to submit? Is that the reason?
Yes, four qualified firms that have done the work, they have the expertise to do the work. They've done similar work in the past with the experience of working with them. So we know they can do the work. All we ask them for is just estimate on what the pricing will be.
Okay, and you could do that because it's an emergency?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Assuming we went with the recommended company, what's the timing? And when will students be able to use the performing arts?
So what we are hoping for is we should have it completed by the end of November.
Okay.
That's what we, the timeline that we talked about with all four firms that we contacted.
And how soon would they start?
If we approve, if the board approves it tonight, we can inform them tomorrow, and they can get rolling.
Awesome. Was the timeline comparable for all firms?
Yes, yes, it is.
So is that a decision point? Is the timeline oftentimes? Are you looking at their timeline and ability to do it within? Does that make sense?
All three firms provide a similar timeline as to when they can do the work.
Thank you.
So what is different is really the pricing. Because all three firms we've worked with before, we know they have the ability to be able to do the work. So that's not in question. And we also set up a period of time for them to come and actually do an examination of the site so they can get, they can get a really good idea of the amount of work required for them to do it. And the process that we use, design-build, is one that allows for the work to be done more quickly. Because what we ordinarily will do, we'll break the process down, have the architect design the repair, and then we will go out and bid the construction part of it. If we were to do that very easily, we'd be And if we were to do that very easily, we'll be looking at spray before the work would be completed. But by doing a design bill, which is a, a very, it's not unusual for this type of project, we're trying to do it in a way that is economical, that's practical, and it's cost effective.
Oh, go ahead.
Are there liquidated damages if they are not finished by the time deadline?
That will be, once the board approves it tonight, that will be part of the contractor project that we negotiate with the, the firm. What we normally do, we have an A A agreement that we sign with them, American History of Architecture, we have an attorney work with them to, to negotiate that, and that will be a provision that we put in there. That is a provision we put in all contracts that we've done since I've been in the district.
What is the, what is the projected lifespan for this kind of surfacing?
Gosh.
Like, when will we have to worry about this again?
Honestly, it should last at least twenty to thirty years if it's done right, which we will have warranty and we'll have a bond taken out in case we have issues during a reasonable period of time, so it should not be an issue.
Okay.
So this, this is, this is the process that's established by law because of the emergency factor and student impact and all those types of things, safety and all that. So you said that they came out, were they the ones that put together the summary of findings and scope of work?
Uh, that was.
Confirm it, so I.
That was part of. That was part of what we actually laid out for them as the stats required for us for the work to be done, so it was a collaborative effort.
And they came, checked it out, said that's it. I don't want any surprises, I guess.
Right, all, all four, all three firms came out and checked it out. The fourth firm we never heard from, even though we reached out to them. So they came out, we requested that as part of the process. We actually wanted to bring this forward at the last board meeting, but we wanted the firms to have an opportunity to take a really good look at what they will be doing. We didn't want them to come back with a change order and say, hey, since you all did this so quickly, we missed something, it's going to cost additional X or Y. So we delayed the process of bringing it last month to this one to allow for them to actually have their, their cost estimator go up and take a good look at the, the site.
Okay. Randy, anything else?
You always call me when I'm doing something I haven't noticed. I've noticed that, this is the second time, sir. Just a little joke, no, no questions.
All right.
He's got a teacher gene.
All right, we're moving on to information item.
Eight point two.
Eight point two, we were going to vote.
Yep, I got it. See, sorry about that.
I like how you broke this out. All right, emergency approval of Oswego High School main gym floor.
So as part of the flood that happened just a couple of days after school started on August sixteen, we had, I know we had close to seven inches of rain in a very short time and there's a courtyard at OH and the courtyard has got an intake that takes water into the municipal drain, but the level of water that came down was so fast, so quickly, in such a short time, the, we believed the municipal intake was not able to handle all that water. So what happened, the water backed out and since the courtyard was pretty much filled up, there was nowhere else for the water to go, it started sipping into the bottom of the building. And the, the courtyard is actually located by door thirty-nine, which is the athletic department. So that area in the athletic office was flooded as well as the hallway and the gym there was flooded by water too. And fortunately, we have insurance coverage, we contacted a claim adjuster and the claim adjuster, we were able to get remediation company to come in and remediate that and clean up the water, but the damage was done to the wood. And the, one thing that is clear is water and hardwood floors don't mix. And by the time the, the remediation company came, they, they cut a hole in the wood just to check how much water was in there, what was actually bubbling, it was like, like a mini river. What it meant is that we have to replace the whole wood floor. So in, in getting the, the repair company to come in to repair, to repair the hardwood floor, they pull all the hardwood floor out, we found out that the subfloor was actually not constructed correctly when that hardwood floor was installed in the first place. There was some, there was some divots there, there were some holes that were just passed very quickly, so the, the floor was unstable in the first place. But fortunately, since we had an insurance claim, the insurance company is going to pay the majority of the cost of fixing it. And what we're paying are the side of the, the, the hardwood floor of the gym that wasn't damaged by rain, but was damaged nonetheless. So that's the cost that we have to come out of pocket with because it wasn't part of the, the flood damage that we experienced back on the sixteen, nineteen, seventeen. So our cost for doing the work that wasn't impacted by the, by the flood is forty-one thousand, the, the cost, the total cost is closer to two hundred thousand, uh, three hundred thousand, the insurance company is going to pay just about everything and we only have to pay the forty-one thousand that is not related to the flood. And just similar to the situation here in this building, the gym is used for a lot of athletic events that cannot, those spaces cannot be used. And since we have the ability to have the insurance carry on the majority of the cost, we thought it made sense to just get the whole place completed so it can be built. Part of what we actually found out as to the areas where we have to fix, there were bleachers that were sitting on that side, that over time, we didn't use those bleachers, but the way they were constructed damaged those outer area that we need to fix. We've asked the, for those bleachers to be removed, those bleachers were never used and now we will just fix it and we won't have to worry about the bleachers damaging those areas that we fix it now.
Any questions?
Yes, same, same questions as before, timing of it?
As soon as possible.
Okay, I, I guess I'm looking more.
We've actually started work on it, we started work on it already.
For potential end date.
They did, the date they gave us also was the end of November.
That's really not bad.
That's the, that's the quickest way they can do it. They'd actually started the work already, they removed the wood floor already, they, they're waiting for the okay to start doing the demo on the subfloor to fix it. Once they get the okay, the insurance company is giving up the okay to replace the, the wood floor. We were waiting to get the okay, we didn't want them to start and then have to come back, there's a startup cost, if you will. So as soon as the, this is approved tonight, we'll let them know that we get the okay and they can start doing work and we can try to make sure they do it as quickly as we can, or will, better than, than what we started with.
And is it just me or, or does it seem like every time something happens, we dig into it and it was put together with a Band-Aid? Sorry, that was just a comment.
We have a lot of issues we're trying.
My question is also similar to previously, I understand that because, just again, from my education, my understanding is that because this is an insurance claim, we can go directly with the recommended vendor from the insurance company?
Yes, yes.
Instead of going to an RFP, is that right?
Yes, and not only that, this is a very specialized work, working on bleachers, replacing bleachers, and there are very few companies all over the country that actually have the skill set to be able to do it. And one of the top company is actually, that's the reason why the insurance company contacted them. And they are, they are renowned all over the country, they out of Wisconsin, and I've used them in different places where I've worked when it comes to bleachers, there are not too many, hardwood floor, there are not too many companies that would do the work. Some may claim to do the work, but they don't have the expertise or the specialty to be able to do the work and do it well in a way where the floor will last twenty, thirty years without any problem.
You might not be able to answer this, but to what extent will, will these repairs impact basketball season? I know that starts like in November, correct?
We are hoping to be able to get it done by the middle of November is what we are hoping to do, which is why we need for the project to be approved and so they can, they've done the demo already. So really all they have to do, they need to fix the subfloor, once they fix the subfloor, then they can start installing the, the wood floor. But they can't do any of that stuff that we are responsible for, since it's over a certain amount of time, until the board approves it, we can then give them the go ahead, which we intend to do by tomorrow morning, if approved by the board tonight.
Anybody?
Do, are there plans to prevent this from happening again in the future?
We've actually, we've, we've started conversation with our civil engineer and I've actually experienced this at another district where I work. In that particular case, it was actually a school and every time it rained, we had significant rain, the school would flood and it was unfortunate, the kindergarten was actually in the basement. So every time it rained, there would be, not just water, it'd be sewer too, the sewer line would be low, so we have to get that mitigated. So in working with the civil engineer, what we came up, we came up with a pipe that actually runs over the, the roof of that section of the building, so every time it rained, the pipe would direct the water, the water away from the building when it gets to a certain level. So we were talking to a civil engineer and trying to come up with a similar solution, so we don't have to do this again, because we believe it would be stupid on our part to add the incident now and to spend all the money fixing it only for it to happen again. We have to come out with a solution to mitigate that, that's what we are working on.
Do you think that if we do go forward with that project, that there would be a cost savings on our insurance?
Honestly, yes, it will be, but not directly.
Okay.
And I'll explain why, because insurance is a business, I tell people that, people who own insurance company ask investors to invest with them and they also engage the service of a insurance company to pass the, the risk around. So what happened is the amount of premium you pay every year depends on your claim history. So if you claim a higher proportion relative to how much you pay, investors want to make their money back in subsequent years. So if we can, if we can mitigate this and in future, strong, we don't have the same problem, it will impact us and allow us to save money moving forward, not immediately but in the future.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Move to action item nine point one, approval of bills for payment, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of nine million, seven hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Serone.
Aye.
Ms. C.
Aye.
Dr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Wenmouth.
Aye.
Dr. Mario.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Dr. Pollock.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item nine point two, emergency approval of Oswego East High School Performing Arts Center repairs, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve and award the Oswego East High School Performing Arts Center repairs to Performance Services.
Any further discussion? Oh, any further discussion?
Dr. Mario.
Aye.
Ms. Wenmouth.
Aye.
Dr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Serone.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Dr. Pollock.
Aye.
Ms. C.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item nine point three, emergency approval of Oswego High School main gym floor, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve and award the subfloor and gym floor replacement at the Oswego High School main gym to Stalker Sports Floors.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Dr. Pollock.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Serone.
Aye.
Ms. Wenmouth.
Aye.
Dr. Mario.
Aye.
Ms. C.
Aye.
Dr. Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Action item nine point four, approval of personnel report, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as discussed and presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Wenmouth.
Aye.
Ms. C.
Aye.
Mr. Serone.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Dr. Pollock.
Aye.
Dr. Mario.
Aye.
Dr. Martin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Hey, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.